Thank you.
Okay. Hi Chuck, hi Joe. I'd like to start the evening with a presentation. This is where we get to honor those who have served us for record numbers of years, five years, 10 years, et cetera. So Justin?
Yeah, so what we're gonna do here tonight is we'll call everyone up individually. We'll get a quick photo individually and then we'll get a group photo at the end. And then, once we're done with that, there's a brief presentation that we want to play for everyone. So let me just pull that up. And so it's ready. Okay. All right, well, it's great to see a lot of the employees here tonight. And this evening, it's my honor to present our Six Annual Years of Service Awards. We initiated this recognition program in 2016 to show our appreciation for all of our full-time civilian employees. Our service milestones begin with five years of service through retirement. On behalf of Borough Council, myself, I wish to extend our congratulations on all reaching these significant milestones with the Borough of Pottstown. The loyalty and commitment each one of you have shown towards success of this organization is much appreciated. Thank you for your hard work and dedication. And as I always say, our employees are one of our most valuable assets in the Borough of Pottstown. And I'm thrilled to be able to celebrate your milestones with you here tonight. So first up, we have Anthony Pulese. Congratulations. Want to just spin around and get some photos? All right, next up, we have Winter Stokes. And these are all five-year service recognitions. Congratulations, Winter.
No, I want you to be, please stand.
Christine Weaver. Danielle Lafferty. Congratulations, thank you. All right, and last on the five years of service is Wayne Beeler. He's not with us here tonight, so we'll get that to him. All right, moving on to 10 years of service, Brian Marquette. Congratulations, absolutely. Thank you. All right, and last but not least, Andrew Darren Becker. Oh, you made it, good. All right, one last round of applause for everyone. All right. Thanks, everyone, and we'll play a brief video here. It won't be too painful, I promise.
I'll bust a chocolate retire. Justin?
Can't get rid of that thing.
That's fine. Bye-bye, Mike. Brian?
All right, and thanks to Dawn Mater, HR, for putting together this nice presentation for us.
Well, thank you to all for all the service you've given us. Stick around for another 40 years or so, and you might set a record here. Under Subcommittee Reports, Infrastructure, Councilor Lebedinsky.
All right, Senior Packet?
Yes. Anything to add?
Um, no.
Transportation?
No meeting.
No meeting, okay. Efficient Methods, Councilor Lebedinsky.
No meeting last month, we'll have one Monday.
Monday. And the Ordnance Review Committee, Councilor Prosser.
We were joined by Tracy Purdy to give us some, you know, guidelines and maybe how to regulate bed and breakfast. And then, we went over some ordinances for council's consideration this evening.
And Economic Development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening, councilors. So, tis the season. It's getting here, so I want to encourage everybody to support local. The Yifty Card website is consistently being updated. So if you don't know what to buy somebody, or you're not sure which restaurant or store they want something from, please make sure that you go on yifty.com, and you can buy that, and they can use it for any participating business in the borough. So that's a really great gift for somebody, and I encourage you to use that option. Second Nest is now open on the 300 block. It's a beautiful spa space. I saw pictures of it today. It's really very lovely. This is the second location of that proprietor. So she's already got a successful business model, and we're very excited to have that. I, oftentimes, it's been a little disheartening to see small businesses not be successful in the borough. There's lots of fun and excitement when they first open. And as we've seen, some businesses have come and gone. I want to shout out to Underdog. They came here, if you remember, there was a hearing for them to get them into the location on Charlotte Street. And now, they have been so successful that they are moving to East High Street because of the growth that they're experiencing. So that's a really wonderful thing, and I wanted to be sure that you are aware of that.
Good.
I also am seeing more occupancy out at the Walmart Shopping Center. Stone Medical Group is now out there. So I know we're excited about Panera Bread across the street coming. I know that. But we want to visit out there even before it's there. I think that Longview has done a wonderful job as far as keeping tenants in that. And if you remember, they did a facade improvement several years back. And they really keep a nice shopping center there. So I want to make sure that we give them a shout out as well. Some things coming up. Santa will arrive once again on the river via dragon boat, December 3rd, at noon. And we are having a planter competition. Danette is keeping the chart. There are a few planters that are still available. There is no cost to it. There is a cost to you decorating the planter. But it's an ever-popular competition, and it's great to visit businesses around town and see those organizations proudly displaying their pictures and their ribbons of past success. Tree lighting, 7:00 PM, here at Smith Family Plaza. Once again, the students from Pottstown, as well as some of our senior citizens, will be singing carols. And this year, we will have cocoa and cookies available. So the tree lighting and the mayor will do, offer some remarks. Steel River is having "It's a Wonderful Life." So although we are going to be doing the tree lighting at the same time as that particular performance that evening, I do encourage you to get your tickets to Steel River. And I think that is all at this time. Oh, and Santa will be at the Santa Shack at the alley, and there will be activities there for the children.
Very good.
As long, and adult beverages, which are not for the children. So that is my report. Would you like me to go?
Land Bank?
The Land Bank? Okay, great. All right, so Land Bank representatives, the president and secretary of the Land Bank were able to execute an agreement of sale, as well as settlement documents. So 208 Gable Avenue is now in the process of being updated. And I know that the neighbor is very happy that that is going to become a property that people can be proud of. We have two properties that we're working through. Hopefully, we will go to settlement before the end of the year, but it may be right after the first of the year. I want to talk a little bit about Land Bank. There seems to be a lot of confusion. I get a lot of emails from Land Bank. Peggy Lee Clark does not decide who gets the properties. Land Bank decides who gets the properties. And they come to the board every month. End of the month, Councilor Vanny sits on Land Bank as one of those individuals. They are all discussed. Where we have been getting them have been from the judicial sales. Some of them are available, but the Land Bank decides on which properties that they want to pursue. There is an application period, so it's not like somebody just emails somebody and says, "I'm interested in inquiring something from the Land Bank." There is an application. If you have not gotten your pre-application in for consideration, that's the very first step. So I encourage you to check out the policies and procedures on the Pottstown Land Bank website. That's a really important piece to it. So, other than that, I have nothing except for the next Land Bank meeting. And they are public meetings. They happen right here in this room, or via Zoom at 4:30 PM on November the 28th. There is no meeting in December. That is my report.
Thank you. Emergency Services, Chief Hand?
He's not able to make it.
All right. Maybe Monday. Human Relations, Ms. Levin, good.
Good evening, councilors, Council President. November is Native American Heritage Month, and this presidential designation aims to provide a platform for Native people to share their culture, their traditions, music, craft, dance, and ways and concepts of life. This Friday, November the 11th, is Veterans Day, to honor those who have served in the United States Armed Forces. And Thursday, November the 24th, Thanksgiving. It's a great time to be thankful and appreciative of what you have. And then, the commission's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 13th, at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and all are welcome to attend.
Very good. Thank you. From the library, Minty?
Good evening, Councilwoman. Our library is doing great. We are open our full hours that we were open pre-pandemic, and our programming has reached and exceeded our programming offerings that we've been having. We do have six job openings, so if anybody is looking for part-time or full-time work, we are hiring right now, so they can check out our website. And we do have youth and adult volunteer forms, so people looking for places to volunteer. Our statistical reports weren't ready when I printed this report out, but we are, I was told that all of our numbers have increased, so they're steadily increasing, which is great to see, that everybody's getting back out to the library. We have a couple of events. We were thrilled to be able to participate in the amazing Raze, with a lot of other nonprofits in the area. We also enjoy participating in Haunts on High, and it actually came all the way up to the library this year, so that was really fun. Got to see a lot of the kids coming around. We had a very successful Fright Night with a paranormal investigator on the 28th, and we, it was so successful, we're going to do it again. Our next big event is coming up on Thursday, December 1st. We are having Mount Laurel Brass come and do a concert. And we're having our first-ever Cookie Walk. So when you, with your $25 ticket, you get a cookie tin, you get to see the concert, you get to walk around and fill your tin with different cookies and pastries that are being donated from different organizations and businesses around town. So get your tickets. And our Friends of the Library, their next meeting is in November. It's on Monday, the 14th, at 10:15 at the library. And our Board of Directors meeting at the library is open to the public, and that is on Thursday, November 17th, at 6:00 PM at the library as well. And we will also offer Zoom for that one, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And from the Ricketts Center, Councilor Kirkland, anything to add to the report?
Yes, I just want to just let everyone know that on the, let me see, the December 6th, there will be a blood drive. That would be NAACP, Pottstown, and Ricketts Center Partnership Blood Drive on Tuesday, December 6th, from 2:00 to 7:00. You know, please come out, you know, and, and, you know, give blood is very important for the community, to give blood. I will be there giving blood. So please, please, you know, participate. This is a very important event. December 6th.
End it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. Our mayor will not be here tonight. We'll probably hear from her on Monday. And Ah, schoolboy. Councilor Lebedinsky, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's fine.
I have too many
Since you skipped me, I'm gonna take an hour, just because you skipped me. Thank you.
I have too many adjustments.
So I don't know if you heard, we have a new principal at the high school. I'm gonna try to say his last name, because, Dr. Danny Billy? That's, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, I'm sorry. But he can be called by Dr. D. So him and his wife, they live not too far from the high school. They have two kids, one named Jill, I mean, I'm sorry, the wife's name is Jill. And they have two kids, one eight, one five, and they go to Franklin Elementary School. So if, and, oh, and the wife grew up in Pottstown. So if you happen to see him, and if you don't know what he looked like, all you have to do is go onto Facebook, or go up to the high school, and, you know, give him a good welcome. Also, Stephen Rodriguez announced that the, there's a report that was sent out about test scores for reading. And for the parents to, before, the parents weren't getting these tests, so now they're getting the test delivered to the house, so they can see the progress of their children. So I thought that was interesting. That was good that they're getting that test now, so. That's it.
Is it? Okay, thank you. So now for our manager, Mr. Keller.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everyone. So first off, just an update on the Firebird sign. If you recall, that was approved by council a while ago. And they were in the process of raising money. They weren't able to raise as much money as they needed, but they were able to change the material from a bronze to a nice molded plastic. It looks pretty, pretty high quality. So that was sent to us, we received it. So, you know, the color and the appearance and the text will stay as originally approved. And then, it's intended to be installed on the south side of High Street in the vicinity of the Blue Elephant driveway in Smith Plaza, on one of our existing light poles there. So look for that in the next week or two. And then, I have some good news from the authority. At their last meeting, they approved a financial contribution to the borough in 2023 to help offset costs for future roadway maintenance caused by truck traffic impacts to borough roadways. So in light of increasing costs and impacts, staff is recommending a 12% increase in the fee that the authority charges to the bulk haulers. So these are the haulers that bring in waste from other places, the porta-potties, the septic fields, and then we treat them at our, at our plant. And 12, of the 12% total, 8% of that would be directed to cover plant-related costs, such as the increase in cost of chemical prices. And then, 4% of that would go towards roadway maintenance, given that there can be 100 trucks per day accessing the plant using the borough roadways and causing deterioration. So current estimates project this would raise an additional 558,000 per year, with 372,000 going to plant operations, and 186,000 going to roadway maintenance. The roadways to be maintained with this fund would be Moser, Centaurav, Wilson Street, Industrial Highway, and Kime Street. And the funds could be used for roadway paving, bridges, and, or roadway drainage. And we checked the rates of some of the other bulk treatment plants in the area, and we can confirm that we're still in line with what they're charging people, so still remaining competitive there. And we've asked our authority solicitor to work with the borough solicitor to prepare a form of a document that best achieves and moralizes this arrangement. Since the authority doesn't meet until December, we expect to have an agreement for your review in January of 2023.
Very good.
And more good news, the borough was awarded a county transportation improvement grant for the rehabilitation of the Moser Road Bridge in the amount of $448,750. The project is estimated to be in excess of $800,000 in total. And staff plans to move forward with this project using the grant and a portion of the borough's ARPA funding to make up the approximately $400,000 needed to fully fund the project. So we have the engineers moving forward on, on plans for that. And we're hoping to get that out to bid early next year.
Good.
And then, at long last, I see Marcia's here. The repair work at 42 Walnut, that seems to be in full swing. I think that they've poured some of the footings, and they took delivery of some of the aluminum plates. So they're going to begin assembling those. And once they get started, it shouldn't take too long for them to be completed. So hopefully, by next month, we'll be looking at a completed project down there. I know it's been a long time coming. And then, a reminder that Borough Hall is closed for Veterans Day, Friday, November 11th. And lastly, I just wanted to update on the fact that most of the borough management staff has completed their Lean Six Sigma Yellow and White Belt certifications. So for those of you that don't know, Lean Six Sigma is a method for improving performance systematically by removing waste and reducing variation that relies on a collaborative and team effort. Increased performance and decreased process variation contribute to defect reduction and improvements in profits, employee morale, and product or service quality. To sum it up in a nutshell, Six Sigma is a business methodology for quality improvement that measures how many defects there are in a current process, and seeks to systematically eliminate them. So we will be looking to apply some of the tools and techniques that we learned through this program to different processes in the borough to make them more streamlined and efficient. I mentioned the first two levels, and the third level is a Green Belt. And I understand that we have our first Green Belt graduate.
Yep.
Do we do that today without that one?
Yeah, we certainly want to congratulate our Vice President, Lebedinsky. He's the first to achieve the Green Belt level. And it kind of coincides with him chairing our Efficient Methods Committee. Gives him firsthand chance to apply what he's learned and teach everybody here how we can run more efficiently for the sake of the borough.
I do appreciate getting the opportunity.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. I do appreciate getting the opportunity to be the chair of that Methods Committee, the Efficient Methods Committee, and that, giving the opportunity to be able to become a Green Belt is really going to help us out. Moving forward, also being able to bring on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw somebody else on the bus. We're gonna bring on Lisa to the Efficient Methods Group as well. So we'll be able to have a larger brain trust and people with different suggestions and issues we can take care of.
Very good, congratulations.
I can't wait for next year's Yellow Belt.
Congratulations, Paul Vier.
Who's gonna be next? Who's next green?
Try for the end of the year.
Okay.
It's my goal.
Well, good. It is time now for our presentation of the 2023 budget. And trust me, our staff, particularly the Finance Department and Administration, have been working their knuckles to the bone.
Good evening.
Done a fine job.
Thank you, Dan. So as you're aware, last month, we reported that there was a $343,000 deficit, which equated to a 3.44% tax increase. After our meeting, we went back and we asked our directors and our managers to review their budgets specifically for the general fund, the Parks Fund, and the Fire Fund. And they were able to cut about 1% of those expenses. In addition to that, we did receive our final figures for healthcare premiums and insurance costs. So tonight, we are presenting an updated budget with a $203,219 deficit. That equates to a 2.04% tax increase. We are proposing mills not to exceed 14.229, and a total proposed budget not to exceed $58,305,385. So just to review some highlights that contributed to the reduction, we had tax assessments currently remain unchanged. We're hoping that we receive a favorable assessment for the final in November. And then, one major update was there, we reported that there were two part-time fire positions. We did go back and reevaluate that, and we realized that we changed them to two full-time positions. There will be one full-time fire inspector and one full-time admin one position. And this was really due to three new programs that we want to bring on for the borough. Those include commercial fire inspections, commercial vacant property registrations, and business registrations. And between those three programs, they will generate about $122,000 in revenue, which basically covers the cost, the expenses of those employees. Just to, just to note that the Fire Fund is still contributing over $200,000 to their capital savings plan at this time. Healthcare premiums were negotiated to increase 7%. Last, last month, we started with an increase of 13%, and through our negotiations, we were able to get them down to 7%. Workers' compensation expenses will remain about the same for this, for the 2023 budget. And our liability insurance has increased an average of 6%. Next slide?
Go ahead.
So overall, this shows the proposed budget with the summary by funds. You can see that the deficit is for the general fund only. It's an increase of .2841 mills. And that equates to $28.41 increase per average tax bill.
Ready for questions?
Sure.
Councilors, anything?
Great job, great job.
Of course, that still includes those, it would be two traffic officers, is two, correct?
Yes, all the positions reported last year are, remain the same, except for the two, two part-time went to two full-time.
Yeah, so it's, it's two officers, they're not traffic officers, they're two police officers. Yeah, yeah. And so what we presented at the last meeting remains, we're just presenting what changed from last meeting to today. And that was, position-wise, it was the two part-time fire inspectors to one And that was, position-wise, it was the two part-time fire inspectors to one full-time fire inspector and a full-time admin.
Just double-checking, that's all.
Yep, 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 but they're still in there.
Anything else?
So if there are any other questions for Monday night, we're asking council to advertise a not-to-exceed budget and advertise a not-to-exceed millage based on the numbers that our Finance Director presented.
And I can tell you, the Finance Committee did meet. We reviewed all this information, and we suggest you approve it. Once we vote on this Monday evening, it'll be locked in. That will be the ceiling. If there's a way we can bring the prices or the cost down, we will. If not, we'll be finished for the year. Won't be any, can't get any worse.
Okay.
I have a question. And we will look for ways to bring that down.
Oh, they'll continue that up till December thirty-first. So what we vote on Monday evening will be, we'll be capping it, not to exceed. And they have done a phenomenal job.
Yeah, and the big thing is getting that final assessment number from the county. That's really going to determine whether or not, you know, we can bring it down a measurable amount, you know? Because at this point, we've sharpened everything up pretty tight, and we did, you know, get an additional one percent, but we'll keep looking for stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, you heard me say I have all kinds of notes here for this evening. And at this time, I want to interject with an add-on to discuss about our fire service. And we have some improvement agreements ready to roll, yes?
Yes, so just to kind of get everyone up to speed, over the past year, the Fire Chief and I have been meeting with representatives from all four fire companies serving the Borough with the goal of more efficiently running our operations and to provide the best cost for service for our taxpayers, but also in a way that's mutually beneficial to the fire companies. So as a result of these conversations, we are recommending the potential consolidation of two of the Borough's independent companies, Empire Fire Company and Goodwill Fire Company, into one cohesive entity under Goodwill Fire Company. So the integration of these two companies will allow the Fire Department to maximize resources and improve emergency services for the community. To effectuate this change, Borough Funds currently provided to Empire are planned to be increased and reallocated to Goodwill sometime in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. This will allow the consolidated Goodwill Fire Company to remain economically competitive in the face of rising costs while allowing the Borough to maintain its current millage on the fire tax. Consolidated fire service eliminates duplication of equipment and the competition for manpower. In addition, the firefighters will no longer need multiple insurance policies. The consolidation will retain volunteers and career staff by maintaining resources and services from Empire Fire Company and Goodwill Fire Company just under one entity. Residents can expect the same or an increased level of service with enhanced ability to cover major incidents. So our request for council for Monday night would be to authorize a solicitor to provide a sixty-day notice of modification of the fire service agreement with Empire and Goodwill, and to revise the fire service ordinance to remove Empire from providing fire protection services to the Borough in twenty twenty-three. So to reiterate a couple points that I don't want to get lost in the rumor mill, this consolidation will not result in a loss of career drivers who are currently employed by the companies. It will not result in a loss of volunteers, will not result in a reduction in fire response times, it will not result in a loss of fire apparatus or trucks, and it will not make fire responses less effective.
Very good.
So at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions anyone would have.
I remember, I don't know, ten years ago, probably, we tried to merge them. There was a lot of pushback, you know, from the public and from the firefighters, frankly. What's different this time? Why is, why does it seem to be happening now when it couldn't happen back then?
Well, I think, you know, we've taken a different approach, and one of the things that, you know, Frank and I have been meeting with the four fire companies on and off throughout the year, and the big thing that they wanted was a increase in their allocation and that the Borough provides to them. So in order to do that, we want to see the Fire Department operate more efficiently, and we believe that a consolidation partially achieves that goal, at least for the two companies involved. So we had a company that was willing to take on the employees from Empire, and that's kind of how we arrived at where we're at. But we do expect to have ongoing conversations with all the fire service providers in the Borough about, you know, next steps that could be taken to make us more efficient and more effective.
Okay. Does the, the rank and file of both fire companies, do they in general agree with the merger, or is there some pushback going on?
It's not a merger.
Yeah, just to be clear, this isn't a merger. It's, we're not asking Empire and Goodwill to merge, we're asking them to consolidate. So in other words, create a whole new entity when we already have an entity was one of the reasons why, you know, we said, let's go with one entity. It just makes things a lot more straightforward. So I know that we did receive a letter from the leadership at Goodwill acknowledging their support for this. And we updated the President of Empire yesterday on the plans.
You notified, you said you notified the leader of Empire yesterday?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so you haven't got a response from him yet as far as his?
No, I think he needs to take it back to his company and relay that news to him. And, you know, Frank and I are happy to be there with him if he wants us there. But, you know, this is really, I think, in the long run, the best path forward for the Borough, it's going to, you know, it's hard to get four independent entities to agree on something.
Right, yeah. I, you know, I think it's a good thing in general. I mean, you know, I remember we tried to do it before, it was a major ordeal before. And, I mean, we even had consultants come in and everything and talk to them and try to persuade them. You know, it was, there was a lot of pushback at the time. One thing they were concerned about was their history, because, you know, everyone's proud of their own fire companies. You know, so, you know, and a lot of them were very concerned about maintaining their history. Is that, do you see that being any type of an issue?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, I remember that was a big issue back then.
I mean, the history is wonderful, and we respect that, and a hundred and fifty years is nothing to, you know, that's a great accomplishment, for sure. But the history is the history, and the current is the current. And currently, we need to make sure that we're providing the best service for the community, and we think that taking this step will be the first step in doing that.
Right. And I agree, you know, for the most part, I agree with that. Are they going to be merging, I don't know if that's the right word or not, but facilities?
Consolidation.
Consolidate facilities, how's that going to work?
They're already in the same building. So, so Goodwill owns the building, they rent space to Empire. So, you know, one of the funny things that Chief Hand always told me was that they were married and they didn't even know it. Which, you know, which is pretty, pretty close. The volunteers at Empire have reciprocity with Goodwill, meaning that nothing needs to be done for the volunteers to volunteer for Goodwill, they're already in. It's just a matter of moving, changing the name on the paycheck of the drivers.
Okay. Do you think the current, do you think the current financial or the current economy in general of the country has anything to do with it being more palatable at this point in time?
Well, I mean, there are pressures. I, you know, I think that all the companies struggle with the pay, that they're paying to their employees. Just to be clear, they're not our employees, they're the employees of the fire company. But obviously, you see where everyone's pay is going. You know, costs are going through the roof, salaries are going up, and they're having a hard time keeping up. So I do think we are at a critical point. If we want to maintain the good men and women that we have, and we want to be able to recruit good men and women in the future, we need to make sure that we're competitive, and by increasing our allocation a little bit as an incentive to this consolidation, they get to that point.
Okay. All right, well, I hope it works out, you know, like I said, I remember we tried to do that before, you know, we were all for it before, but we had a lot of pushback. So if it works out, great, perfect. You know, I'm happy for the Borough, I'm happy for the fire companies.
Any other comments?
Joe, just to answer your question, I think the lapse of time, you know, ten years or so, has changed a little bit of the attitudes, you know? And as Justin said, they've been sharing facility now for a long time. Everyone's gotten more comfortable, and clearly, we're not speaking for any of the fire companies. They'll still exist and everything, but the consolidation effort and the cost savings of efficiency, you know, helps us and helps them as well. So I agree with you, hopefully it'll work out very well.
Right, I just wanted to get that discussion out there, that's all.
No way.
Yeah, I remember it well. We had some contentious meetings back then, but I think the Borough took a little different approach this time to try and, you know, talk to the companies and, you know, show them the benefits of what might happen if we were successful.
Perfect.
Okay, if there's nothing more.
I guess, the only feedback I got from Empire or one of their forum members was that he was looking for more of a, you know, a full company consolidation, but I guess it's just to be a good first step.
It is, it is. Right? And our action for Monday evening?
Yeah, so the action would be to authorize the solicitor to provide a sixty-day notice of modification of the fire service agreement with Empire and Goodwill, and then revise the fire service ordinance.
Okay. And we'll list that for Monday. All right, now, back on track. Number eleven is the cooperative agreement between Paid and the Borough for marketing three-twenty-seven Industrial Highway and one-seventy-five South Evans Street. Mr. Garner?
I'm going to take this one, actually.
Oh.
And that's, that's Justin.
All right.
Yeah, because this document is pretty much almost identical to the one that was used for the Heslot. And the cooperative agreement is for Paid taking the lead to develop and advertise an RFP to prospective developers in consultation with Borough staff to dispose of the Borough properties that are mentioned here. So Paid would review the RFP submissions and make a recommendation to council for the highest and best use, and in exchange, Paid would receive a commission of ten percent based on the sale price at the time of closing. So it's really structured the same way, and then the next item is the RFP, which will kind of, I can explain, kind of dovetails right into this. So again, this is almost identical to the Heslot RFP, so really, this outlines what the Borough is looking for and the requirements for prospective developers, including their implementation experience, their financing, a context-sensitive design, desired end uses, and then the emphasis on that is going to be on the number of jobs that are created and/or the tax revenue. We have bonus points in there for incorporation of public amenities on the site or green building techniques, and this one-point-five-acre site is ideally suited for commercial, mixed-use or residential development.
Good.
And we have, we have that set to, you know, open, you know, pretty much right after you guys would approve it, and then it would run until the end of January.
Okay. Any questions?
I have questions.
Sure.
So first, why are we trying to sell this property now? When the market's the way it is, interest rates are high, we've had this property for a long time, why at this moment do we want to sell it?
It's an offer, and we don't know.
We don't have to take it. We don't have to take the offer.
Okay, but is there a reason that we're trying, or there was?
Well, we've had, we have interest, I mean, we have interest in it. We've been approached by at least three developers already. So, and which, that hasn't been the case for years. I mean, no, I mean, so it is, yeah, I agree, it's kind of, it's kind of odd timing, but we also haven't been, had this much interest in a while either.
I have questions regarding the ten percent. How was that figure determined for the Heslot as well? Was just ten percent, excuse me, ten percent pulled out of the air? Was there a reason for that specific number?
I mean, I think that's a pretty typical real estate commission number. I mean, it wasn't pulled out of the air, it was, it was offered as a suggestion, and, you know, we discussed it here.
Right, and based on the hours that you paid for the real varn, it was something that you brought to these. So do these property or does this property require any more work than the Heslot? My point is, the sale of these, this property would probably go for more than the Heslot, meaning the compensation for Paid would be more. If it's, excuse me, the same amount of work, why wouldn't the amount that they got for the Heslot be a fixed price for compensation for Paid?
That didn't sell yet. That didn't sell yet.
I know it didn't sell yet, but isn't there an agreement?
Yeah, the same, it's pretty much the same agreement, yeah.
Right, so is there a difference or, for marketing, the two properties? Like, the ten percent is a blanket, one that's going to sell for a lot more as opposed to one that's going to sell for a lot less. The compensation for Paid is more based on the same amount of work to market that property and get developers for that property.
Have you a suggestion?
No, I mean, I would, yeah, actually, I do have a fixed price, the same as the Heslot, or same compensation. Heslot was, is less work to market, or, I'm sorry, is more work to market as opposed to this nice piece of open space property that we have that's going to have a higher sale price. So why should the compensation be more than the Heslot if the amount of work for the property is less?
What's percentage for the Heslot sale?
Ten percent.
Same.
They said it's identical, these agreements. That's what was just said, yeah. So why would they be identical if the property we're currently talking about is an easier property to market, it's a nicer property?
Which lot do you think will bring in the most revenue?
The one that we're currently talking about.
Yeah, but we don't know if it's going to bring in any revenue for Paid, and they could do all this work, and the council could decide not to do anything, and then they get nothing. So I mean, there's an element of, there's an element of risk in there, too.
I'm not arguing that, I'm talking about the ten percent. And more or less work.
So we would pay him a flat, okay, okay, so we would pay him a flat fee regardless of whether it's sold or not, then?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
So they're going to do it?
On the sale, why does it have to be a percentage of the sale price? If it sells?
I'm saying it doesn't, it doesn't have to be, but if it's a flat fee.
It's not a fee, it's compensation.
Okay, so it's, so we're paying them for the work that they're doing regardless of whether it sells or not?
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Are you doing that same thing for the Heslot? Are you doing that same thing for the Heslot?
No, I'm asking you what you would prefer.
I'm saying compensation should be a fixed price, and it should be comparable to the Heslot. They shouldn't receive more money for a piece of property that's easier to develop, market, and sell. That's going to sell for more money anyway. I just don't understand why the compensation is not the same to paid.
In both, in looking at the RFPs, just so everyone's clear, there there's a minimum bid or a minimum offer in both the Heslot agreement as well as the RFP for the industrial highway. So, Justin, I think in the RFP for the Heslot, what was the minimum? Was it a hundred or a hundred and fifty?
I think a hundred and twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. So, but in in the RFP for industrial highway, I think the minimum, as I saw, was three or three fifty?
Yeah, I think three fifty.
Okay, so so the difference, it sounds like the difference just is based on the 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 minimum bid. So you're comparing ten percent of a hundred and twenty-five versus ten percent of three hundred and fifty conceivable.
And that would be money that the borough would get from that sale. No, if you have the fixed price. If they, if you give ten percent compensation for this property, that compensation is way more on three hundred thousand dollars than it is on a hundred thousand. Mm-hmm. Right?
Sounds, sounds logical to me.
That difference in compensation, if we have the fixed amount, then the larger sale price that would have gone as compensation at the ten percent would then come to the borough. Job is to come up with stuff for the borough.
Good. Anyone else?
So I guess, you know, we would need a recommendation, and we would have to take that back to the paid board to see if they would accept it.
A fixed amount. Equal to the ten percent that they would get for the Heslot.
That's what I was trying to ask, though, is it's a fixed amount rega- regardless of if they sell it?
Do they get the ten percent for the Heslot regardless if they sell it?
No.
Well, that's the answer.
Okay.
I guess maybe I'm wrong, but if we're, if Paid's acting kind of like our real estate agent for that, I mean, it's, they get a cent percentage of it regardless if the property is, the house that they're selling is two hundred thousand.
Remember, yeah.
It's, it's pretty much constant, you know.
This different than a private sale?
Well, sure, it is. I mean, this is a whole different situation. And again, we're not getting Realtor commissions per se. I think standard Realtor, Realtor commissions would be about six percent were negotiated. Again, this is not really a a normal sale or a private sale since we're dealing with an economic development entity in a municipality. So obviously, it's it's different than than just a commission, at least it might be.
But I guess the other thing is that, remember, like, we're, that we're doing this so that we can use paid as a conduit.
But aren't we doing that with the Heslot, too?
Correct.
So how can we say it's the same thing when?
But there's, I mean, I'm not, whatever the value is, is what the value is, but there, but there's, there's a value to being able to use paid as a, as a conduit.
I'm not disputing.
Transaction.
Right.
And.
I'm just saying to make it the same as the Heslot, the Heslot compensation without the percentage. They were okay with what they would get from the Heslot, so why wouldn't they be okay with that amount for this piece of property that's going to be easy, easier to maneuver?
We just don't know what those amounts are. Because we haven't sold any.
Have you sold the Heslot?
No.
Well? What's the difference?
What are you basing the?
On, on the appraised value.
I mean, it makes sense what you're saying. Why not just, just consider it? I mean, it 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 makes logical sense what you're saying.
Yeah. It does make sense.
I mean, I don't, I don't see why it's, it's, it's.
Is that gonna set a precedent for everything that paid helps us with in the future, or is it gonna be always the same amount then?
Nothing is always forever, or, I mean, that's, that's a little.
Case by case basis. Don't be sarcastic. It's case by case basis.
Sorry, Joe?
Case by case.
Right.
So, and I just want to be clear, like, we we need to use paid as a conduit or another economic development entity as a conduit for this transaction in order to make sure that we get the right kind of use in there. Because as a borough, we cannot ensure that. We have to put it out to bid.
Talking to them and asking them about a fixed amount for?
There is no aversion. We're, we're talking now. There is no aversion. But the reason is, is because if if the borough were to sell it, we wouldn't pay any, you know, real estate commission or whatever. Right? But we would have to bid, put it out to bid.
What are you doing with the Heslot? Like, if, if these documents are exactly the same?
Yeah.
Understand, if the borough sells it, they could put anything in there.
Well, that, again, that's not totally true.
Well.
The borough's obligated, when it sells property, to award it to the highest bidder. But in the past, and I think, I know, Dan, you were part of it, but we sold or used the parking lot next to, I guess, the Autozone in downtown.
Correct.
And put that for bid with conditions. So we did that without the assistance of of any entity because we imposed conditions on the bid. And if whoever was the highest bidder and met the conditions, we had to award it to, and it worked out. This, again, with paid, you, we clearly have more flexibility in the end user, but the borough does have the ability to put it out for bid with conditions, and if the bidder complies with the conditions, then we have to award it to the highest bidder. That's not the case in the situation with paid or another development authority. There's more flexibility, and that's what I think Justin was alluding to.
Okay, I still think we should go back with the fixed amount.
Okay. And and the amount you would suggest?
What they would get on the appraised sale value of the Heslot. The ten percent.
What if they don't sell the Heslot?
What if they don't sell this lot? How did the, how did it get to be ten percent for the Heslot, and that agreement is fine, but this, that also hasn't sold yet, is an issue? Like, alls I'm asking is for a property that's worth more money that if there was a fixed price of the same amount that it speculated that they would get for the Heslot, that they wouldn't take for this better piece of property? I mean, and that difference in money would then go to the borough.
We don't know if they would accept that.
Well, you don't. It's always no unless you ask.
Okay. So we have two ways to list this from Monday. One is to go as printed with ten percent stipend or whatever. And the other is to use a fixed amount of twelve thousand five hundred.
Yes.
I understand.
Well, we, yeah, but you don't have, I mean, the first option is that the paid board has to agree to that.
Oh, yeah.
And and that's going to be another, another month.
Okay.
So.
You know, I had concern about the market anyway, so another month, I don't, what's gonna make or break it? I mean.
Okay. Let me try a straw poll. Mr. Prosser. Which way would you like to see it written?
That would, there, well, right now, it'd be ten percent.
Ten percent.
That's okay.
Is that it? You want the fixed amount?
Correct.
Okay.
I want it at least brought to the table and asked.
Mr. Labidinsky?
I agree with the negotiation side of it with Lisa. However, if that doesn't go through, then we could just go with the ten percent and work on something beyond that afterwards.
Right, and that would take it off the market for now.
For now, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Lindsay?
I like the fixed.
Fixed fee.
Mm-hmm. Yep, let's negotiate.
Okay.
I like that better.
You, three?
Instead of fix.
Mr. Kirkland?
I mean, instead of.
The fixed amount, they equate to ten percent, just like this presented.
Yep.
So, so everyone, that was just a straw poll.
Right.
That is not, that means nothing.
Right.
Come Monday night, anybody can make a motion or not make a motion.
Right.
Do whatever you want. I realize, Dan, you were just asking for opinions, but I don't want anyone to construe that was a vote or other individual thoughts.
Right. We will need that to.
Yeah, so I'll, I mean, Peggy's here. She heard the conversation.
Right.
You know, we, her and I can talk, and we can take that back to the board and.
Yeah.
And see.
I, I don't know if their board can answer us by, before Monday. If so, we'll move on it.
Can we get her thought on it?
Can we what?
Can we get her thought on it?
Can we get her thought?
Peggy's thought.
Peggy?
Well, she can't decide for a whole board.
I'm just, her opinion. I'm just, you know, that's okay. Don't worry about it.
He can't hear, he can't hear you.
My only opinion would be is that, remember, the minimum bid on the Heslot is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We obviously want to try to get more for that, for all entities, right? And the other thing that I would say that I would like you, for you to keep in mind is they are non-tax-producing properties at this point, and paid is working very hard to increase, because that is our mission, to increase the tax revenue long-term of the borough. So I just want to put that out there, that I do understand that if you're saying apples to apples, but there are some other things that come into play for that. And paid does have the connections with the development community. So those are some things that I would like you to think about, and so setting a base amount, I would think that our board would want to go back and negotiate because if you're going to set it based on the hundred and twenty-five thousand minimum bid, if it's a possibility as we want to get more than that for the Heslot, that's just a minimum bid, I don't know what the board is going to do to react to that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yep.
You'll wait till we hear from them?
Yes.
Okay. And what about twelve now? That's the request for the proposal for the two properties. We were going to extend that.
Uh, yeah, so the Heslot, as we had mentioned, interest from developers has been somewhat soft, so we would be asking to extend the RFP to the end of January to allow more time for responses.
And and that's an entirely independent issue for the other.
Okay.
So there's no reason, if council's inclined to extend it, they can't extend it.
Okay. So we will put that on for Monday evening and at least do that much.
So I'll say, I appreciate paid's initiative using the social media to, you know, market the Heslot. I've seen it quite a bit on Instagram and various.
Okay, so that'll go on. Thirteen is to extend the Heslot request for a proposal. Change that deadline to January thirty-one. I think it had an earlier deadline before.
Yeah, it was, no, no, it was expired, it's October thirty-first.
It already did, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll list that Monday to extend it to January thirty-one. Okay, fourteen is aviation fuel bid.
Yeah, so as part of the effort to make the airport more self-sustaining and customer-friendly, we were planning to install self-service aviation fuel pumps in the coming months, and instead of the FBO purchasing the fuel, the borough would instead purchase the fuel and enable us to keep all the revenue for the use for airport purposes, so since we anticipate exceeding the bidding thresholds we were requesting to put this out to bid in in the next couple of months. So just looking for your approval to go out to bid for fuel.
All right, we'll list that for Monday. Fifteen is a bid award for the water trench street restoration.
Yeah, we received two bidders, and from what Public Works indicates, the prices are about where they should be, what is to be expected, so we, but we'll have a recommendation for Monday on who to award to.
Okay. And the other bid award is the Riverfront Park Bridge Button.
Yeah, so we received a, a single bid award on this, and it greatly exceeded the estimates for the project and didn't include some of the work we requested, so we're going to recommend rejecting this bid and rebidding it at a later time. Yep.
Okay, we'll do that. Now, the towing bid awards, is that you, Chuck?
Uh, yes, Dan, thank you. As council knows, under the borough ordinance, the borough puts out towing services for the police department through a bid process. We, based upon the bids we receive, we award the two separate towers, typically east and west end. That's out again, and the bid opens tomorrow, so by Monday night, we'll have a recommendation and hopefully, additive bids for the two towers. In the past, that's been Mans in the west and Santitoga in the, in the east. So that's all I can tell you.
All right, we'll list that. Eighteen is ordinances. Mr. Garner?
Sure, we've been advised that Washington Township, Berks County, wants to become part of the Regional Recreation Committee. In order to do that, all participating municipalities must pass an ordinance to allow them to come in. The ordinance would allow the amendment to the Inner Cooperation Agreement for purposes of regional recreation. Alls we're asking, I guess, the other municipalities are in agreement, asking for authority to move ahead with advertising the ordinance, so you can amend the agreement and expand the members of the group. And, Justin, I believe everyone's recommending that happen, correct?
Yeah, yes, I believe so, right, Michael?
That won't take effect till everybody in the, in the group does it, but I understand that's in process.
Just for the record, that's not an adjacent township, right? That's a separate, that's a, a separate township? It's not, it's not connected to anything that we're, with the PMR PC?
It's not in our region.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Correct, that's in Berks County, just the other side of Bored Town in Bardo.
Berks County.
But what was the question? Oh, the, yeah, the park representatives, when asked to vote on it at the last meeting, voted in favor of accepting, as this is covered under the existing funding resolution that everybody already has in file, so that's why it comes to the elected bodies now.
Okay. All right, we'll list that one. Mr. Garner, how about the ordinance to create a business registry?
Sure, Dan. The next two items on the agenda, both have come out of ordinance review committee, as Ryan mentioned in the beginning of the meeting. The first is in coordination with the vacant commercial registration ordinance you guys passed in September. So basically, this ordinance would just require businesses to register with the borough. There's no inspections. It's just basically to improve the database for a lot of reasons. There is a model ordinance that Lancaster used. I believe it's in your packet.
Yes.
The ordinance review committee recommended that the borough move forward with this type of ordinance. And if council agrees, the motion on Monday night would be to prepare an advertising ordinance to create this, you know, business registry.
Okay. And also an amendment to regulate the smoke shops.
Yeah, that's, that's the next item. That's, that's item twenty.
Right.
Also, out of ordinance review, there's been, I guess, a potential proliferation of requests for smoke shops or hookah bars. Not necessarily familiar with the hookah bars, but apparently, they're becoming quite popular. Right now, these uses are treated under our zoning ordinance specifically only as direct retail uses. There was some concern that there may be too many of these things that may open up. According to the ordinance review committee, they'd like to provide for these uses in several districts by special exception. And there was an outline that was included in your packet that basically included the requirements that would have to be met for these to go into effect. One of, one of the main requirements is separation distances between these types of facilities. I believe. I believe one would be permitted in downtown, one would be permitted in another district, both by special exception. So again, little more regulation on these types of businesses. And Ryan, you're part of the committee. I don't know if I expressed the committee's intent correctly, but you can certainly, you know, chime in if I missed something.
No, that about explains it well. It's kind of similar to those convenience shops that we looked at a few years ago, how we kind of regulated.
Right.
And right now, just because of your ordinance not being specific enough, it falls under a broad category of use called direct retail. And this would now add definitions for these types of facilities. And therefore, you could regulate them more specifically and with specific regulations so they wouldn't just be any other direct retail.
Yeah, and I think one of the requirements that we're looking at is putting a separation distance on them, so like, you can't have, you know, more than one every 1,200 feet. It's not, you know, it's not that we're not open to them, but just we don't want them, you know, every other property, so.
Free and a block.
Right, right.
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't disagree with putting some regulations on there, but are really hookah bars becoming popular now? Like, that was several years back, that they were popping up everywhere. So what was...
Well, according to our zoning officer, I mean, we do get, we are getting more inquiries about them, so.
Like, how many do we get? Do we know?
I would have to, I would have to find out.
Okay. I'm just curious, why all of a sudden, that seemed to be popular some time ago?
Is this also, is this also a preempt for the possibility of marijuana becoming legal, too?
That was part of the discussion.
Yeah, we did, you know, it couldn't well be...
Smoke shop eventually, that's going to become legalized, then...
Hook is completely different, right?
It's a water bottle. It's a water bottle. It's the same, I mean, they can use whatever tobacco they want.
I think it more or less came out of that people were asking about these. We didn't have regulations for them. They were regulated under direct retail, which really they're not. And that's kind of what started the whole conversation. Not that we're being, like, inundated with them, but we have had a couple of requests recently, and we don't have regulations on them. And we thought that that might be something the committee might want to look at, so.
That's a reasonable answer. Thank you.
And Lisa, just to answer your question, I agree with Justin. Zoning Officer has, on several occasions, prompted our office to look into this, you know, because there's interest in these types of uses. So I wasn't really familiar with them directly, but apparently other folks are. So maybe we missed a curve, but at least we'll get it in there if you guys want to.
Yeah, and the other thing, I think, smoke shops, you know, we're kind of, we have it defined vaguely on the agenda, but this means like vape shops, too. I believe that that's what we're also looking at, which have become more in popularity.
Smoke shops have, but they don't actually vape in the shop itself, or hookah, you're doing it in the facility.
Correct, yeah.
They are separate.
Well, that's what we're doing. We're separating all these uses. We're separating...
I just don't want it to be lumped in with smoke shops, too.
No, no, that, no.
There's separate, there's separate definitions in the outline. There's separate requirements in the ordinance, and they'd be located in separate districts. So they all are, they're separated, but we're referring to them collectively for purpose of this discussion, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so that's 19 and 20 for Monday evening. 21 is a resolution for PICO Green.
Yes, so this is essentially the same grant project for Riverfront Park Tree Maintenance Planning. That was approved last month. However, the amount that we need is actually reduced to $6,480. So therefore, we have to technically obtain a new resolution from council per PICO's requirements.
Okay. We'll list that for Monday. Sports Enterprises, Inc., Mr. Landhart?
Actually, I'm going to take that one. So the current lease calls for Sports Enterprise to give use of their facility to the rumble when it occurs. But it doesn't allow for Sports Enterprise to collect any revenue for that use. And as such, you know, the rumble is a great event, but it causes a lot of degradation of the field and trash, and, you know, things that have to be addressed. So since Sports Enterprise is responsible for the property and the facility upkeep, including the wear and tear from the rumble, we wanted to have a little more flexibility to be able to provide them with an opportunity to recoup some of those costs. And then secondly, we wanted to think about a mechanism whereby we make sure any subletting of the field to a third party will have a local benefit, whether by meaning like some portion of the payment goes to the borough from the sublease or some other sort of measurable assurance that the funds collected will go back into the field for its maintenance and upkeep. So I don't think we've, those are kind of the main points. I don't think we've fleshed out everything, and this is really just to ask for council to authorize a solicitor and staff to work on an addendum that you would have a chance to review later.
Discussion, questions? All right, we'll list that. 23, the Animal Control Officer Contract Amendment. Mr. Garner?
Yes, last month, you recall that you authorized the preparation of addendum for our ACO. We put together the addendum. Would be effective January of next year. It basically changes the rate that the ACO can charge from $25 per call slash hour to 30. All the other terms and conditions remain in effect. I just received word from the chief today that the ACO signed the addendum, and so we will present it to you on Monday for your formal approval. It's what we talked about last month.
Okay. Thank you. 25 is an appointment, a resolution to, for the zoning hearing board alternate position. And we have one Todd Thorne mentioned.
Construction code?
Pardon?
Yeah, we missed construction code.
24.
All right, all right, 24 is the appointment of a construction code Board of Appeals alternate position, and that named is Matthew Sendebier. Okay, we'll list that Monday. 25 is the appointment of the zoning hearing board alternate, Todd Thorne.
That's the only applicant that's here.
Yep, that was the only applicant.
Only one, okay. Glad that. 26, the Funky Santa 5K for December 4th.
Yes, Parks and Recreation is requesting to close College Drive between Hanover and Keystone Boulevard from 8:45 to 10:15 a.m.
Okay. We'll list that one for Monday. It's time for comments for any citizens that are present. Anyone online?
No, we did not get any requests via email or chat. And no one signed in for comment either.
All right, how about councillors? councillor Kirkland, any comment?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Very good. councillor Lindsay?
I'm sorry, guys. I've been up since 1:30. I'm sleepy. I just want to thank all, everybody who came out to vote yesterday. When I came to my polling place at 6:30, there were, there was a line. I was just so proud that they came, because I haven't seen the line since 2018, I think. It was 2018. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you for everybody who came out to vote, and congratulations to the folks that won.
Very good. councillor Labidinsky?
Thank you again for everybody who came out to vote. Luckily, council wasn't on the chopping block this year. So you don't have to suffer with us for at least another year and a half. Other than that, congratulations to the Phillies for making it to the World Series and Houston Astros for winning it. But it was a nice little wild ride to watch.
councillor Danny?
I do. I only have two quick things, and I can't remember if I mentioned it one of these last month, so I'm going to mention it again. I had an opportunity through another recreational thing that I do to volunteer at Steel River Playhouse. If you haven't done that, you really should. They have a sign-up genius. It was an amazing opportunity to get, I volunteered at the concession stand. So I got to see people coming in and going, and it was really nice to talk to the people, and they let you watch the show for free during intermission. So it was lovely. If you haven't gone there for a show, I strongly recommend you do that. And I will be volunteering there more often, so come to the concession stand. The other thing, and I'll make this quick because it's a long story, but I have to thank Doug and Wayne, who I think was recognized for a service award. I was sold a hot water heater, and then after that, my problem did not go away. And they blamed the water company, which is the borough. The borough came out, and it wasn't the water meter, and they were able to diagnose the problem. Wayne immaculately took a pipe apart, verified what the issue was, put it back. There was not a drop of water. And then I could yell at the plumber and got some money back, and they came and actually fixed what was their issue. So thank you, Doug, and I'm sorry Wayne wasn't here because he's excellent. So thank you. That's all.
Yeah, councillor Prosser?
I'd like to thank a man named Robert Edmonds. He kind of coordinated a lot of local leaders to meet at, in Olive Church, to, you know, discuss gun violence, which is probably one of the, that is the biggest thing for me to contend with, or at least in the first ward. And I just appreciate him doing that and continue with that. And I'd also like to kind of point out, I've seen a lot of, you know, much more police presence on the streets, too. Actually, even saw Lieutenant Long, you know, on Saturday. And I thought, I guess get out of the office too much, but he was there.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody that came out to vote yesterday. Unofficially, I understand, we had more people voting yesterday than ever before. And that's just a wonderful experience. Offhand, I don't know why 100% don't vote. It's their opportunity. It's their right. It's a way they can help forge and direct their future. But to those who showed up yesterday somewhere between 8:00 in the morning or 7:00 in the morning and 8:00 at night, I do thank you. That's all I have at this time. Meeting adjourned.
Goodnight, all. Take care.